Good evening, everybody. We'll call the January meeting of the Anderson County Board of Education to order. And our pledge is going to be led by Corey Horton tonight.
(inaudible)
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 Thank you, Corey. We have a resolution honoring our food service staff that Ms. Portwood's going to read.
This is a resolution honoring the school nutrition staff by the Anderson County Board of Education. Whereas the Board of Education and the Director of Anderson County Schools want to recognize the important work of the food service workers. And whereas our food service employees are usually the first staff members at school, ready to prepare good, healthy meals for all the students and the staff. And whereas food service staff members are as essential, are an essential part of our school system because they prepare and serve food to enable our students to be the best they can be. And whereas food staff, excuse me, food service staff members have a great responsibility to prepare and serve food that will promote a healthy eating lifestyle for our students and staff every day. And now therefore, be it resolved, that this board acknowledges and expresses its appreciation to each food service staff member in our school district. And be it further resolved, that January the 13th, 2023, is hereby established as Food Service Appreciation Day in all schools, and the board encourages each school to participate in the celebration of honoring these important school employees. Adopted wholeheartedly and unanimously by the elected School Board of Anderson County, Tennessee, meeting in regular session on the 12th day of January 2023.
So hug a cafeteria worker tomorrow, right? Is there a motion to approve that resolution?
(inaudible).
Second. Motion's been made and seconded, all in favor say aye. Aye. Wholeheartedly, aye. Unanimously and wholeheartedly. Something good, mister.
Yes, Clinton Middle School is coming. Ms. Myers, our Principal of Clinton Middle School, and I'll let her introduce her staff members.
Yeah, so last fall, we received a STEM grant from the Nice longer foundation, several middle schools in Anderson County. And so part of that was a week PD and some science kits from the Open SciEd program. And so we have seventh grade science teacher, Ms. Momita Juwi, and Shelley Phillips, eighth grade science teacher, here to talk about that.
Thank you so much for having us. We love to let you guys know what all the great things that are going on in our classrooms. I'm sure that's what you, that's why you're here too. You care about those things. So our something good is that we have had a ton of inquiry this year, and we're going to talk about some positive experiences tied to that unit of Open SciEd we did this year. So we've already made introductions, but if you want to see our beautiful faces along with those things, you can take a look at those. The purpose really for today is for us to talk about those positive impacts of having curriculum. I don't know if you know this or not, but we don't really have set science curriculum in, in the middle schools in the district. And so this was a way, this partnership, this grant, for us to try that out, and we got to do one unit. So as Ms. Myers mentioned, we were grant recipients. We found out about that the spring of 2021. And as a part of that, you get to choose a partner. And our partner was the New Teacher Project. And their role was in giving us access, we already had access to Open SciEd, it's open source curriculum, but really, training, supplies, and guidance for how to implement it. So this past summer, as Ms. Myers mentioned, we all went to Lake City Middle School, and we got to visit with each other and train together to prepare for the upcoming school year. And this fall, this past fall, in our first quarter, we all implemented one unit with all the supplies and curriculum included.
As a science teacher, we always aspire to support our students and encourage them to do actual science, not just talking about or learning about the science. And this Open SciEd curriculum, it gave us a student-centered approach that requires the students to take their ownership of their own learning. In 2018, the state of Tennessee, they incorporated three dimensions of science education, so that our kids can meet the challenges they might face in the 21st century. With the help of this curriculum, we were able to use routines like anchoring phenomena, like the kids shared their own experience, driving question boards, investigation, and consensus modeling. All these tools helped us to let us kids to do the science instead of just talking about it.
Okay. So as with any curriculum, you've got to fold it back into kind of what you do, and how have we stretched this out across the year. There were three tools that we found really, really useful. And one of those was the anchoring phenomenon. It is a mystery that you're given, that you provide to the students where they get engaged and they have to try to figure stuff out. And for the eighth grade unit, you see a picture of something we all know and love as a broken cellphone screen. It is their lifeblood, okay? So this is something that's relevant and important to middle schoolers. So that pulls them in. Ms. Yu talked about driving question boards. This is a way where students have, it's student-generated questions as you learn about things. And so what better way to get them engaged than to have them be the ones that ask the questions, okay? So this is an example of one I used this year. It was digital. You see that we started to organize all of their questions from all classes, each color was a different class period, based on theme. And then we investigated one theme at a time to really understand the unit. The last thing were consensus models. And what this was, sometimes it was in a small group, sometimes it was in a big group. Kids were talking, writing, and drawing about what they understood, and they had to edit it over and over again. Here's an example of a starting one that we tried with dealing with collisions. They were having to model different objects and patterns that they saw, and how they moved, and what sort of damage they saw from those collisions. So they, we would refer back to this chart again and again as their knowledge deepened.
So it had a lot of positive impact on our students, but the most impact it had is the engagement. So we, science teacher, mostly struggles to engage our kids in the science learning, but when they had the hands-on experience and they could relate it to their real-life problems, they were actually very highly motivated. And that is why that led to them to take the ownership of their own learning with the investigation, because they now know that they cannot move their science thinking forward alone. They have to all come forward together to perform through our investigation phenomenon. So in our seventh grade science unit, we implemented this curriculum in the chemical reaction chapter. So our guiding question was, how can we make something new that was not there before to start with it? So we started our exploration with the bat bomb. So bat bomb is a common daily product that goes, undergoes the chemical reaction the kids see every day. So they were very highly, I mean, they were very interested about the phenomena. So we started the unit by putting the bat bomb in the water, and with the production of the bubble, it draw on a wide range of questions from the kids, like where did the bat bomb, the gas came from? So we made the driving question board. It is like a visual tool that keeps us track of our mission to perform our next investigation. And the most important thing I loved about that is the ideas for further investigation. I did not let, tell my kid the answer. So I asked them to give me some ideas so that we can further pursue our investigation. And that made a great impact on our kids. So the later one, when I taught the human body system, they were able to reconnect their prior knowledge with the front content mouse that I'm teaching now.
Okay. Here's the eighth grade unit that we implemented. This was contact forces. And our question was, why do some, why do things sometimes get damaged when they hit each other? And so they had some ideas, well, like maybe speed would change it, or the angle of impact, or the mass, or the weight, or the shape, what it's made of, the environment it's in, what type of friction there was. And my favorite question of all was that maybe it's more than one. That seems like a pretty, like, huh, people be like, oh, that's genius to me, because these kids haven't learned about multi variet statistics, okay? But they already have what they need in terms of curiosity in asking questions. So we've got a couple of pictures here. We were testing with carts slamming a golf ball into a CD case to see if it changed shape before it broke and was damaged. We've got them testing a piece of styrofoam, a noodle, and a coffee stir to see how much force it could withstand before it was damaged beyond repair. And so they learned about elastic limit there. So really, it's a series of a lot of small investigations that helped deepen their knowledge. So ultimately, the takeaways for this, hey, we're thankful. We love getting stuff, and we love getting support, and we had a really great time. And without this, I don't think we would have started the school year off in the same way.
So the student-centered design and this toy-like progression of the lesson provided the opportunities for the students to actually do the science.
And these routines within the curriculum bridge and reactivate prior knowledge. So sometimes kids come into class and they're like, we doing something different every day? And they don't make the connection between that thread that weaves things together. And so the storyline approach of this curriculum really helped with them understanding, okay, I remember yesterday, we did this investigation, and we're moving on to this next thing.
So students are more engaged and motivated to learn when they help guide the lessons.
That's all we have. It's something good. Thank you, guys.
Very good.
Thank you. Yeah. Thank you. Yeah. (applause) I believe those were our only guests for tonight, so there are no other guests, there are no persons to be heard that we're aware of. So that brings us to approval of the agenda.
Click it back, Pam.
That's okay.
Oh, I have it on my screen.
It'll come up in a second. There it is.
There it is.
Yep.
I move that we approve the agenda.
Second.
Motion second to approve the agenda. Any other discussion? Not all in favor, say aye. Oppose, no. Remember, that includes our minutes from the last meeting. Oh, that's that agenda. Approval of consent agenda, sorry, that's next. Motion second to approve the consent agenda. Any other discussion? Not all in favor, say aye. Oppose, no.
I want to have a question. On the policy for second reading, was that your policy that we just?
No.
That wasn't it?
No.
Okay. I see it. Thank you.
All right. Executive approval, there was one, and that was a budget amendment of $250,000 to do some cleanup for weather-related incidents at a couple of schools. So that will mainly be reimbursed by insurance eventually, but we needed the cash. So Dr. Parrot and I made that decision. So I guess we need to approve that budget amendment.
Do we approve?
Motion second to approve that $250,000 for capital outlay. Any discussion? Not, that's a roll call. Is that a?
Well, since it's executive order, you can just do it.
Oh, okay. That's right. We are, okay. All in favor, say aye. Oppose, no. That is done. Couple of things that you need to know about. I assume everybody got an email about the legislative, TSBA Legislative Conference, that is February 16th and 17th. So that will, that's a continuing education item. And since we're not doing the retreat that weekend, you could go, that's a Thursday, it starts at two o'clock on Thursday afternoon, then there's, then it goes through Friday morning, so you're done by noonish on Friday. So if you're interested in doing that, that's, how many, how many bills did you say had already been introduced?
There's already 250 bills on education that have been introduced.
So it's going to be another year.
Is it, is the session presented by TSBA?
Yep.
Or we got a bunch of politicians in?
No, no, it's, it's TSBA.
No, this will be our, our staff, TSBA staff going over the legislation, making sure folks understand it.
Yep.
The board retreat, we have decided will be here on, on Friday, March the 3rd, from 3:00 until 9:00 PM. That's as long as it'll go. We may be, we may finish early. Andy may need to go to bed, so. But we'll start at 3:00, and we'll, we'll go as long as we need to and get done. Do I still do your thunder if I talk about the fall?
No, no.
Oh, okay. TSBA, TSBA has invited us to host the Fall District Conference this year for the each district, so.
Oh, God.
Yeah, we were just talking about it. It's about our turn, so we'll get to host.
Good.
We'll get to host the whole each district. It's Fall District Conference, but it's going to be in August, so.
Where will that be? At Anderson County High School?
We've got to sit down beside.
Do you know the dates?
Yeah.
Do you know the dates?
Uh, yes, but I don't have any. It's August.
It's in August.
Yeah, it's in August.
Is that what it is all the time, Scott? Mostly in August, that one week?
They usually use in September.
Well, they do.
It was September this year.
Yeah.
Or last year.
Yeah, there's seven, eight across the state, so they do them, they spread them out, but anyway.
I'll send you, I'll send that email, or you can send that email. I'll send them, that way they'll have that date.
Yeah, okay. All right. Then we want to recognize our Teachers of the Year. Everybody has a list in front of them. So we're doing board order. Ms. Bell, would you like to read your people first?
I'd be glad to do that. I have Marty Bailey at Norris Elementary, and Zan Brayden at Norwood Elementary, and Makela Cotton at preschool.
Andy?
I have Tina Thomas from Lake City Middle School, and Jennifer Taylor, Norris Middle School.
Dr. Burrow?
I have Miranda.
(inaudible) Peyton Stukesbury.
Okay. Peyton Stukesbury from Bryceville Elementary, Taylor Nobles from Claxton Elementary.
And I have Miranda Better from Norwood Middle School, and Jamie Lynx from Andersonville Elementary School. And Dale has Ginger Seals from the Anderson County Innovative Academy, and Jamie Brewer from Clinton Middle School.
All right. I'll recognize Claire Bradley from Grand Oaks Elementary, and Gladys Stukesbury at Lake City Elementary.
Okay. From Clinton High School is Megan Ellis, and Clint River Community School is Charlie Cannon.
I have Amanda Massengill from ACCTC, and Duncan Cobble from Anderson County High School. And I'll do Joe's. She has Becca Seaver from Dutch Valley Elementary, and Cheryl Butler from Fairview Elementary.
All right. So a big congratulations to all our Teachers of the Year.
And if I, and if I can take just a little liberty, if April Myers will stand up, she was voted today our Principal of the Year.
All right.
First year, that's pretty impressive.
Very good.
Pretty impressive for a first year.
That's voted on by her peers, so.
Very good. All right. The next item, we get to read some more names. These are our Above and Beyond Awards for Food Service for this month. So we'll do that again. Ms. Bell, if you'd start us out.
I have Barbara West from Anderson County High School.
I'll do, Joe has Andersonville Elementary School, Carolyn Queener, and from Bryceville Elementary School, Jody Bray.
I have Loretta O'Neil from Clinton Middle.
And I have, from Dutch Valley Elementary, Marissa Northrup, and from Fairview Elementary, Carla Kiro Sands.
Good for you.
From Grand Oaks, Megan Lane, and from Lake City Middle, Leslie Goodman. Can we do Dale?
Yeah, do Dale.
Dale from Norris Elementary has Tina Low, and from Norris Middle, Lizana Hosh.
And I have Angela Gold, Norwood Elementary School.
And I have Maria, Maria Gonzalez from Norwood Middle.
All right. So that is a cash.
Yep. Cash award.
Award, I guess, for our, for our food service folks. So congratulations to those folks, too. That's all from the chair. Student Board members.
All right. Before I get started, I just want to thank you guys for the Christmas card, and hope you guys had a great holiday. So at AC for academics, we got dual enrollment starting next week. And then we also have a practice ACT Saturday, January 21st. And then we are in the process of adoption math textbooks. For athletics, we have track and field that plays January 20th. Our golf team is having a chili supper fundraiser. Basketball's playing Friday, the 13th versus Clinton at home. Wrestling is the 12th, but they also got third in the Maryville Invitation. And then we are also raising money for the special education classes to go to the state Special Olympics. That is it.
All right. Thank you, Corey.
And I would also like to thank y'all for the Christmas card. It was very thoughtful. Thank you. So for academics, we had our Tennessee Promise Meeting for our seniors, and that, like, had the most students at it, like, ever, or most, sorry. They had more seniors show up than ever before in, like, CHS history. So that's pretty good. Dual enrollment starts January 16th, and most of our classes are filled up. We're getting a few students in there that are just kind of like, they haven't signed up yet, but we're working around their schedules and stuff. Baseball and softball season starts February 25th, and they're both away games. Tomorrow night is the AC versus Clinton basketball game, which I'm very excited about, even though I won't be able to attend, but I'll watch it later. All of our sports average GPA scores are above a 3.5, so that's really good. And wrestling is going good, and they're gearing up for state. And then, like Corey said, math teachers are in the process of adopting textbooks. So that's it.
All right. Thanks very good. Dr. Parrot?
Yes, just a few things, as you, as you know, from the $250,000 appropriation, we had a pretty major leak at Lake City Elementary School, and I want to thank Clay and his group, and Ms. Yu Banks and her group. They all come in when the district was supposed to be closed, and they just jumped in, and Clay got some people to come in and start cleaning things up. And we had, the whole office complex is tore out, and two classrooms, and one of the classrooms is already back in, all the cleanup, so we're ready to start rebuilding back. So they, there was a lot of people on their time off. Instead of celebrating Christmas, they were up there working, and I really appreciate them doing that. The school, that first day back, they all got together, and, and just everybody, from Mr. Myers to, to technology and everybody, they just pitched in and went and got equipment and fixed things. So it, it is really, you hate to have a tragedy, but it really shows what we have, the commitment we have to our people in Anderson County. When something happens, everybody pulls together and says, hey, we're going to get this. So they did a great job on that, so I want to, I want to personally thank them. Norris Middle School, all the block is laid for the new addition. They're going to start doing bar, bar joyce here pretty soon, so maybe the next month. We will have a roof on that, so it is really coming along great. EST project, again, I think about all we like on that is some brick up at Norris Elementary School, so they've done a fantastic job on those things. CHS, as you know, Mr. Myers is working on with Brady and Company to build a new ag and welding facility there. I want to really personally thank Gary Long and his group. They come in and tore the house down and cleaned the side up for us, and it's all gone, and we're ready to move on with that. So hopefully by midsummer, we'll be bringing some things back for you to approve on that, so we're excited about that. Just some things, I went to a workshop on Tuesday with the new funding, you know, BEP's going away, and we're going to this TESA funding, which we're going from 28 pages to 25 lines. So it is really condensed. There's not a lot of things in there, but I'm working through that, so I'll be doing a really good presentation at the board retreat on that. And I think it's got a calculator in there, how we can calculate things and stuff like that, so I think there's going to be some things in there. The other thing is, we did a survey before Christmas of all of our staff that I'll be bringing back to you all, ask questions about why you're in this district, what are things we can do better. And then we will start our leadership, we'll start doing focus groups, so we'll have them done before the retreat, so I'll bring you all of that stuff back. And then we will, we've got a meeting set up on February, I think it's February 3rd, I may be off a day or two, but we will be looking at our five-year plan to see if there's anything we would like to bring back to you, our five-year strategic plan to update. So we've got all that things going on. I start mid-year reviews with our principals next week, so it's going to be a busy week. But again, I want to thank everybody for what they did. We had a couple of other schools that had leaks in them, but our custodian and our, and staff, they just go in, even when they're off, and check on their schools. It's like their school, so I want to thank them again, so.
Thank you, Dr. Parrot. Committee reports, the Policy Committee, we met just moments ago to approve, I don't have the number.
Hold on.
Okay. I know you do.
It's appearance. Is that what you're talking about?
Oh, yeah, 1.404.
Yep.
Which has to do with.
Appeals.
It's appeals before the board, is what it's called in it, yeah.
There it is.
There it is.
I know I get it.
Appeals to, and appearance before the Board of Education. So we have talked this thing to death, I think, so I hope we have a good, have a good one. Glenda, you want to make any other comments on it, since it's your policy?
The board referred it to, I mean, our Policy Committee referred it to the full board for approval of the first reading, and there was only one mistake in it, I guess I should say, and we talked about that. We have to add might be disruptive, or does not adhere to board rules, and that can be taken care of. And Joe Williams and Eric Snyder and Dr. Parrot approved all the changes to this, and I.
One question, Glenda. And, and the.
Wait, are you, you move approve it?
Yep.
I move that we approve the changes and approve the policy.
Okay. And then, so a second?
Second.
Okay. Now, questions?
The question is, it says, school board cannot add any controversial items to the agenda without public notice. The same public notice leaves that wide open. Does that mean it has to be put in the press, or is, all that needs to be aware of, it's the board?
Yeah. I think what it, I think what that meant was, is that it has to be on an agenda before you can do that.
This, the way this reads, though, public notice is.
It's the same public notice we have to, that the agenda has to go through anyway.
Yeah.
So our, our agenda is, is.
As long as everybody understands that we don't have to publicize it.
Right. It's not separate.
Is that word in?
Who's science was controversial?
Yeah, I, you know, actually, no item needs to be added to the agenda whether it's controversial or not. We can strike that word if we want. That's a good point. I mean, and I don't know if our rules stay that we can add something to the agenda with a majority vote. It's a poor practice for this very reason, because you don't want to.
I don't think we ever have. We move things around.
Yeah, I don't think that, that may be contradicting another policy.
You want to just take number six out?
It may be covered under another policy.
Okay. I will look at it, and if we need to, we can, we can bring it back when we do second reading.
And it's got the term in there, public notice also, which.
Is anyone table this?
No, you can do it.
First reading.
You can do it on first reading.
Yeah. So we can prove it on first reading, and we'll, we'll get clarification on number six.
You could just take that out, like you said.
Well, but if it's not covered somewhere else, it needs to be covered here.
Oh, okay.
But to make it clear, we're not going to add. But to make it clear, we're not gonna add things to the agenda, if somebody comes in and they wanna talk about vest code and demand that we talk about tonight, we say we don't add things to the agenda, yeah. Come back next month, and we'll, we'll have our, you know, 'cause, 'cause we're not prepared to talk about it, that's, that's the reason for that, so, uh, we'll make sure that's not covered somewhere else.
I'll, I'll, I'll read word there.
By some legal person will come in and say, public notice.
Yeah, that's right. Thank you, Dr. Burl. So, so, we're, this is first approval, or first reading, I mean, so, uh, we'll bring it back next month. So all those, any other questions or discussion on? Not all in favor of approving this on first reading, say aye. Any opposed? All right, that is done.
I would like to thank Dr. Burl and, uh, Eric Snyder and Joe for their help with this, 'cause we have, like you said, just gone over and over and over and over, and this has been, and so I just want to publicly say thank you to those people, and you, Scott. Thank you for your input, I appreciate it.
You've done a good job putting that together.
Yeah.
Part of our, th- those who don't know, the part of getting your Level 5 certification is taking a, a policy, reworking it and, and getting it, um, put into fruition, so that's what Ms. Langenberg is doing, and so we wish you well on your endeavor to get your Level 5, uh, certification, so. All right, finance report, it looks kinda empty.
Nothing.
Not a thing. I've never seen that before.
I've been on the board 25 years, I've never seen that. I've been here 40 years.
Did we run out of money or something?
No. We do have money, let's be clear.
Everything's, everything's budgeted the way it need to be budgeted.
Wow.
Now, next month, we'll have 18 pages, but that's. We did it one month, you know?
That's right. So, no, uh, no controversies there, no, all right. There aren't any action items tonight, anything else to cover for the board?
The insurance and schools didn't have a board.
If there's nothing else, we'll be adjourned. Thanks, everybody. Look at that.
To the point.